I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I welcome everybody here this evening, and I certainly welcome our viewers on television. And at this point, I will officially declare the opening of the public hearing on our next school budget. Is there anybody here attending tonight's meeting who would like to speak to the school committee regarding the school budget? Sir, please come down to the microphone. This gentleman off the aisle here, take a seat, pick up a microphone, and please identify yourself.
I sit.
Yes.
I'm Peter Savan, a town meeting member from Precinct 15.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sorensen, and school board members, and Dr. Maestis, and FinCom members who are here. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and make some comments on your budget. And it is my intent to be instructive and helpful in offering some suggestions as we go forward with the budget season. My first comment is, I would have hoped that there'd be more time between the delivery of the budget two weeks ago and this public hearing and your vote, more importantly, probably your vote, so that more information can be digested, made available. We're still a full four months to town meeting. I know a lot will transpire with FinCom, but I think it would have been helpful, from my perspective, especially during this holiday season, to have had more time. I have basically three points I want to make, one of which is that, from a macro top-down standpoint, I look at the total school budget. You are some sixty, about sixty percent of the total budgets in the town of Plymouth. I looked at just some basic data in terms of your enrollment, which has decreased 1.4% I think from your numbers. Over five years, it's down 6.6%. Over five years, the biggest declines are in elementary, which is going to be populating through our middle and high schools, down 12%. Yet, your operating budget is up 3.1 for this year. It is up over 21% for five years. Your spending per student, because students are declining, is up 4.6% and almost 29% over five years. And as I'm sure as you all know, and you've heard the town manager speak, we are shortly approaching our tax levy limit, likely to hit that within two years. So I'm asking you to be mindful of that in your considerations, because I think we all, to ask where you can be prudent. I think also that would be helpful, from a data standpoint, is you did provide, obviously, enrollment projections for next fiscal year, 2020. I think it would be helpful if you could project out. I mean, obviously, it's not cast in stone, but we certainly know how many children from zero to six live in Plymouth, I would think. Do some five-year projections, even 10-year if possible, what our school population is likely to be, based on trends. I think it also would be useful information if you gave some data on all of the children in Plymouth, in terms of what their numbers are, including those that choice out through homeschooling, through charter schools, through private schools, so we know what the total audience we're dealing with. And certainly, the charter school folks impact your budget, as we know. But I think that kind of data would be useful. I would also ask you, when you prepare, once you vote on a budget, if, because I know it goes to FinCom, and there'll be changes made, I think it would be good practice to post it prominently on your website, because you have to sort of know where the meeting dates are to find information and data. Maybe go and send it to Alan Costello, who's head of the precinct chairs, so it gets distributed to every town meeting member early on, so they have a chance to massage, look at the I think the next item, I looked at the budget, I pulled the budget report for last year, which is fiscal '18. It gives, and this is on the town, I guess I got it from Lynn Barrett, I'm not sure it's on the website, but this is the sheet for schools, there's sheets, data for all the cost centers for all the town as well. It gives original appropriations, transfers, revised budget, and then available budget. And what I was somewhat interested to learn, that out of the 34 cost centers that are in the Plymouth schools budget, 24, 22 of them, basically before transfers were made, 22 of them did not spend their budget in dollars, to the tune of some $2.7 million, interestingly enough. And so after transfers were made, they were transferred to other places, and you spent them in places that weren't in the original budget, and you have a habit of basically spending almost every penny that you have. When the town, if you look at the town cost centers, when they don't spend all of their appropriation, let's say, police officer retires, he's at the top of the scale, takes three months to replace him, he comes into the bottom, they end up with an excess. That's where our free cash comes from. But it seems, and the data, I've been able to dig out, very little free cash is made available to the town from school budgets. And I think it would be, again, approaching limits, it would be a good faith effort to be mindful of that, to perhaps not look for extra places if they weren't budgeted, because you have a level service budget, as I understand it. You're budgeting what you need, to be mindful of that. And in your comparison, in the chart, in your budget book, you have comparisons to last year's revised budget. You don't have any comparison to the beginning of the year budget. And so I think that data would be instructive. But I was surprised, and four of those cost centers were over $250,000 in underspending. So it's a significant number, and I think it's worth looking at. And I don't know if the school, you get this sheet or you look at it, but I would recommend to it that you do that. The last thing I would like to talk about is, again, being mindful of costs. Town meeting and the discussions on the charter talked about asking you and the Board of Selectmen to meet at least two times per year to discuss issues of mutual interest. I think it would be very appropriate to do that as soon as possible. I can think off the top of my head, I mean, there are a lot of areas where there's commonality, information technology, vehicle maintenance, perhaps building maintenance. And I know I've, you know, I believe the town is willing to sit down and discuss these things in good faith, and I think it would be helpful if you made those efforts, so by the time we got through the FinCom process and the budgets, perhaps there are some savings and things that can be gleaned from those areas. So that's what I've come up with so far. Again, I'm trying to be helpful and constructive and offer these suggestions to you. But thank you.
Thank you very much for addressing the committee. I did see another hand. Please come down front and identify yourself.
Everett Malaguti, Precinct 1, town meeting. Well, Peter did a lovely speech and actually took a couple of my things. One that I would like to state is the school other revolving accounts that allocate the athletic revolving, bus revolving, et cetera. For the town side of the budget, for, I believe it's been the last two, maybe three years that they've started it, is the other post-employment and fringe benefit allocations from the 51E and a half, 53 and a half, sorry, revolving accounts for the beach revolving fund and all the others that they've taken for the staff that work in those actual funds and that are derived to those positions. If the school has done their transfers for OPEB and fringe benefits from the allocations from the 53E and a half and the school other revolving funds, to share some of the burden between those funds, instead of just building up and you, looking at other alternatives for the revenue streams, instead of just the tax base and state and local receipts. The other thing that I would like to state, as well as, within the budget, I believe it would be either under the business cost center, but for the approval from the Selectmen a few months ago of the transferring, and the school department as well, for transferring the administration from South Meadow to Lincoln Street, if those have been allocated within the fiscal 2020 budget for building maintenance, insurance, electricity, water sewer, all of those expenses. And if so, if there has been deemed cost-saving approach from that, since there won't be as much needed having three separate entities to hold all the administrative processes and just having it in one consolidated building. Those are mine in concurrent to what was just stated by Peter, and I hope that those are taken into account when considering the fiscal 2020 budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much for addressing the committee. Is there anybody else who would like to address the committee specific to the school budget, the next school budget? Okay, I am not seeing any hands, so at this moment, I will close the public hearing on the budget, consider it closed, and turn the discussion to the budget over to Dr. Maestis.
Good evening, everyone. We took a look at the budget after the presentation that we had last meeting, and we have a number of changes that we'd like to present this evening. There are slight changes, and it's through calculation, and we've adjusted those through the budget this evening. They are, these documents are in your school committee agenda for this evening. There are six items I'd like to identify. The first item is a decrease in the art supplies at Federal Furnace Elementary School. They have been reduced by $100. Federal Furnace Music Supplies increased by $422. Hedge Elementary Physical Education Supplies and Materials is increased by $30, and these are adjustments that were made because of calculations that we have gone through and realized some changes need to be made. Matamun Elementary Music Supply and Materials, it's a $135 decrease. West Elementary Art Supplies would be a $4 increase, and Indian Brook Music Contracted Services is an increase of $400. That would change the bottom line of the budget to increase by $621 after we made these changes. And these are changes that were identified throughout our supplies and materials area within the budget, the detail that you do have, and also in our contractual services supply lines. So that would change the school budget without supplies, excuse me, without benefits, to $100,082,488, and that is the amended amount to the budget. Keep in mind, the benefits are handled on the town side. Our total budget, including benefits amended with the changes described tonight, would be $125,546,975. So for the purposes of discussion tonight, we did go through the budget, identified some changes that were necessary, they were adjusted calculations, and we made those and presented them here tonight for your consideration. But as of right now, the budget is increased by $621 from what it was proposed last meeting. So a lot of good questions that were brought up tonight in public comment. We are prepared to address those comments within the days ahead. Keep in mind that we still have meetings with the Finance Committee, we'll be meeting with the Education Subcommittee, we have not met with them. Mr. Costin on Wednesday night will be presenting to the Board of Selectmen a preview of the budget. We are also scheduled for a joint meeting in January. That is a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to, once again, discuss the budget. And again, this is the beginning of the budget process and the budget presentations from now until April town meeting. So a lot of information will be shared. There are some questions that people have posed, and we have, you know, some answers to be able to address some of those questions. So back to you, Dr. Sorensen.
We're open for discussion at the school committee level now. This is, this is an action item on our agenda, so at some point, I'll be looking for a motion, but let's, we're open for discussion here. And may I start, Dr. Maestis, by, some points were made here this evening, or Mr. Costin were made by some of the speakers this evening, and I appreciate your comment that we want to look into these, the enrollment, the move to Lincoln Street, and some of the others. Those things may, they may or may not impact the next budget.
Absolutely.
Years past, we have accepted our budget on this public hearing, and then a week later or a month later, we had to amend our acceptance. So I guess my question is, if we do, we respond to the inquiries that were raised, and if it were to change the bottom line, we could revote it. Is that correct?
We have actually had the opportunity, years past, after going through the process and identifying certain changes, we have asked the school committee to reconvene and have another discussion regarding the budget. Perhaps a motion would be made to amend it, and that has happened in the past.
All right. Other comments or questions about where we are on the budget this evening? If I'm seeing no questions, we could take a motion. Ms. Badger.
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, so we're addressing those through, are we going to do, like, press releases, or do you have some sort of direct communication? I'm just wondering how we get the answers to different people. Are we answering them directly? Are we going to do, like, the series in the Oak Colony like you've done in the past? I'm just...
I don't know.
Okay.
I think it's a matter of us deciding how we, we will make several presentations in public between now and April, probably over 20.
Yeah.
So I think the information that was shared tonight will be part of how we share, how we build the budget, how we manage a budget. And I want everyone to be aware that the school committee has the ability to amend the budget and, you know, transfer dollars as appropriate throughout the year based on situations that come up. I'll just give you one example. You know, we had a boiler go out at Hedge Elementary, and we never went to town asking for money to help with that. We took care of it. And we freeze lines to be able to shift money, to be able to address certain issues that come up. A lot of people don't really stop to think about it, but the state mandated that we offer electronic testing. We never went to the town to ask for 2,000, 3,000 Chromebooks. We had to make adjustments on the fly, we had to make adjustments through the budget. We didn't, we don't have the ability to invest dollars at the end of the school year and put it away to be able to buy things that are necessary for mandates. So there are answers to a lot of the questions that were posed tonight, and, you know, that's what happens when you go out on the road and you meet people that have questions. We will address them, and we'll happy to do so.
I saw another hand. Ms. Haywood.
No, I just, I guess, just wanted to address, I guess, the question or the regarding meeting with the Selectmen. And we actually have, we've met with them several times, actually, since the fall, and continue to meet with them. So I just wanted to be transparent in getting that information.
It's in our charter, in our bylaws, that we have to do it at least twice a year.
We have to do it at least twice a year per the bylaws, but we've actually met with them, I'm going to say probably three or four times since the fall. So it's an ongoing conversation, but I just wanted to be transparent in terms of just giving that information out, knowing that, you know, that we've made that initiative.
And as a follow-up, we will be presenting the budget Wednesday night, as it was presented here two weeks ago, to the Board, to the Select.
Board.
Board, thank you.
And I know we're not here to answer questions, and I, Mr. Savan brought up some very, very good questions, and Mr. Malaguti did as well.
Yes.
One of the things that I want to remind this committee and also the general public is that we have had very long and engaging discussions about consolidation of the school department, the town department. We have documented meetings that went on for nine months to a year, and those meetings gleaned very little benefit for either department. We have invited, we have actually welcomed the opportunity to sit down with the Board of Selectmen, the representatives of the town, to sit down about what does make sense for consolidation. And I think there may be savings, but there also may be a identified need for additional services, and that's exactly the outcome that we had last time when that was presented. So I would say that we've engaged in that, we'll continue to do that. We've engaged with experts to actually guide the process, and other communities have done it, and we've actually polled those communities to find out what the benefits are, cost-benefit analysis years out. So if there is a desire to engage in that, we have not received any correspondence in my office yet as to how that can take place and when it can take place, but it's our process.
As I've told the committee in the past on that topic, several months ago, I acquired all of the minutes from the consolidation committee that met a few years ago and read all of those minutes to see the results of all those meetings. I then copied those minutes and gave them to a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I'm assuming at this point that it's still under deliberation.
Yeah. And, you know, if there's, you know, I think that we have a significant interest in the school department to try to minimize our economic budget footprint. And we have done a number of things in this district to try to mitigate escalation of costs, and, you know, we will continue to try to do that. I think for us to look at consolidation, that's an opportunity, we'll take a look at it, we'll do an honest effort at it. I think Mr. Costin has a couple of comments tonight that might tie into this discussion, so through you.
Thank you very much. You know, when reading reports, it's, you can pull data all different kinds of ways, and I have looked at the report that was referenced tonight. We have, we have over 2,500 accounts in the school department, and when you see money moving around, you know, I want the perception to be clear, because we have, we had a change in DESC requirements for reporting. We had to move a large amount of money out of one cost center, because they are now being counted in another cost center. So that's a large amount of salaries that we had to move from one place to another. Out of 2,500 accounts, we had to put in another, take it out of 15 accounts, put it in another 15 accounts. The other thing is that we hold around $400,000 in one account for lane changes for staff. That's held in one of my cost centers. That has to be distributed during the year when people bump up with a degree. So that is a transfer, that's not an expenditure, that's a transfer. And the other thing is that we are constantly shifting staff. We're hiring, we are reassigning staff, staff is transferring, that money has to follow. And if, we all know that our budget is 85% salaries, we have to move those funds around to follow the people, so that we are able to do those things. So I just wanted to kind of point that out as part of a, the perception when you read that report is not that we're transferring money to spend in unneeded or other places, it's just that the budget is a spending plan, it's created a year ahead of time. Staff changes, laws change, things change that we have to accommodate, and that's why the Department of Revenue gets the school committee that autonomy to do that. I can find no other department in the town of Plymouth that has 2,500 accounts. People may ask, well, why do you have 2,500 accounts? Because the Department of Education requires us to account for all different kinds of expenditures, and you're seeing it more and more in all different kinds of areas. So that results in transfers, and I just wanted to make that point.
I appreciate your response, because one of the speakers said, you have a habit of spending all of the money that you get. And I think what you made really clear, we spend the money not because we want to, but because we have to. And the money has to follow the salaries, it has to follow the personnel, and that's why it moves around as much as it does. Back in the day, and I've been on the school committee a long time, there were times, I would go back maybe two decades or 25 years, where extra dollars were sitting there and they were spent on something frivolous. But, well, perhaps a fence is not frivolous, but I remember one expenditure on a fence, maybe 25 years ago. That hasn't happened in probably two decades.
Yes. One other piece on the staffing front that Mr. Costin alluded to, I think it's important to note, we, the principals and coordinators and directors do a fantastic job identifying the staff needs with me, and we staff based on student need. So for example, if we have a child move into Plymouth, we don't have a projection of that if they happen to be blind and need a teacher of the visually impaired. All types of needs that crop up with our students that move in, we are a transient district, we have children with specific needs, and the staff follows the child. So if the child's going from hedge to PCIS, the staff goes up to PCIS. We don't keep the staff member at a hedge without the child with those needs. So it's a very fluid process, and there's lots of moving pieces, but we work collaboratively on that. So when we also, when we have a retirement, we're very strict about the hiring tiers that we use with our new employees, but sometimes those excess funds need to be used to staff an individual to provide services for children as well. So that's just a factor, and it's a big puzzle, so.
Additional clarification, thank you. Ms. Hunt.
Another thing, too, that I know was asked, was why we don't, or we should put our numbers for our homeschool and our charter students, but we do that, and that was in the presentation, or at least the dollar amount was, but I know that we talk about it all the time, how many we have homeschooled, how many we have to send out of district. Those numbers are always, we give those.
Well, I think, I think we can probably do, we can do a document that's just specifically what the numbers are.
But it is addressed, we address it all the time in our meetings, so just to make that clear as well.
Is there anything else in terms of general discussion before I open the floor for a motion? Many members. Okay, Ms. Hunt.
I'll move to approve the budget.
A motion for Ms. Hunt to approve the budget as presented, and the second is Ms. Badger. Is there a question on the motion? I think it's no hands, we will take the vote then, please. All right, all done. Everybody voted in favor. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who would like to address the committee on a topic other than the budget? Seeing no hands, I shall move on to the next agenda item. And Dr. Maestis, I'm going to put you on the spot here, you have all your program managers here. Is it necessary for them to stay?
Well, we were thinking they could, you know, stick around till like 10:00 PM, but we'll let...
Why don't we take, why don't we take, we'll take a five-minute recess, please. Five-minute recess.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, I'd like to bring us back into session, and we have a special presentation this evening on a campaign, Stop the Bleed campaign. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, we are honored tonight to have some guests in the school committee hall tonight. We had a pre-meeting tonight to discuss the Stop the Bleed program that we are going to bring to the Plymouth Public Schools in partnership with Brigham and Women's Hospital. Ms. Haywood has helped us to bring this to our district, she's a nurse and works for the Brigham. And we had the opportunity earlier this year to learn about the program Stop the Bleed, which is a program that's really geared to increase the awareness and availability of trained people that can apply tourniquets when they're needed. And there are a variety of opportunities for tourniquets to be used. I think a lot of us have been in situations, we had a situation here last year in the district where a tourniquet was applied. So you never know when the preparedness can actually be very helpful. So our meeting this evening, and we've had a couple of conference calls with the folks that have come here tonight to discuss the rollout of a program here in our school district, and we feel very strong and very positive about the direction that this program can go for the Plymouth Public Schools. So tonight, we have some guests, and we're going to talk... So tonight, we have some guests and we're going to talk, they will talk a little bit about training that will take place. The initial thought is we're going to train our nurses throughout the district to become trainers. And that will ensure a level of capacity for years to come. So our students and other staff members, if they believe that they would like to be trained in programming features, if they believe that there's a need to train students, for example, our biomedical program, it's a perfect fit for that opportunity. We would have the internal capacity to train those individuals in-house. It's a remarkable program that can really help and be available, just like we, years ago, we introduced defibrillator training and defibrillators in all our schools. I can't tell you how many times they have saved lives in our school district. So it's wonderful to have the capacity in the event something's needed. This is a precautionary training that we believe our students and staff can take advantage of. And we would build internal capacity, not only for the school department, but the police department and fire department. We did have a meeting all together this evening. So tonight, I'd like to welcome Megan McDonald. She's the trauma education series director, services director from Brigham and Education. And Dr. Askari, they're here tonight. Dr. Askari is a surgeon with a passion for really building a force of, of individuals that can actually bring these skills to an area like education, like the K through 12 scene. Keep in mind, this is only for students in high school and students that have been identified through programming that we have identified. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome Ms. McDonald and Dr. Askari to the table. And Megan.
Thank you for having us.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Again, like it was mentioned, thanks for having us. Stop the Bleed campaign is a nationwide campaign that's really sponsored by, it started in Connecticut, in Hartford, but it's sponsored by American College of Surgeons. And the goal is to teach the public basic techniques to stop bleeding. And it's a campaign that, the goal is to teach the public to be able to manage bleeding before the first responders can arrive at, you know, at the scene. So it's, we're involved with it at the Brigham and Women's Hospital. And we taught a lot of the public at Foxborough and Fenway Park, just going around and teaching everybody the basic techniques required to stop bleeding. And so that's the campaign that we proposed, that we would bring potentially to, you know, to the school system and, you know, take it from there. Thank you. So Megan, would you mind talking a little bit about what the training entails and how that all would work out in our system?
Sure. So the training entails a 45-minute didactic session. It's about a 58-slide-long PowerPoint presentation with some embedded videos, followed by about a half hour of hands-on experience for the participants. So there's 15 minutes in pressure application and wound packing and high-fidelity simulators with pressure sensors. And then there's another 15 minutes of actually applying the tourniquet to a mannequin.
Great.
So we would present that. We were hoping to train the school nurses within the district so they could further train people within their schools that they're assigned to, help students when necessary, work with the biomed program, you know, because they had a specific interest and things like that.
That's great. One of the things that we discussed, in addition to the training, we think there's a great fit for the health professionals that deal with trauma to actually talk to our kids about what they deal with every day and the type of career opportunities that there are. And also, you know, they open their eyes to a possibility of a career or even being part of that, that space. So I think it's important that we, you know, use the resources while they're in town. And just one thing that I want to share, this is done by the goodness of their effort to want to come and introduce us into a public school system. I think we would be the first school system in Massachusetts to actually do this. They've trained the staff at Foxborough, Gillette Stadium, over 600 people there have been trained with the same type of opportunity. So I think the ability for us to increase the capacity of people in our community that have this training, I think would be absolutely a benefit for this community. And I think having our nurses in buildings that have the ability to, to perpetuate this model, I think is a, a long-term staying, sustainable factor for our school district. So we're proposing doing this before the end of the school year. So we'll be working with Allison Reardon and the biomedical students. And we'll be working with Carolyn Rains and our nurse leaders. We've also invited the fire department and police department to send some of their staff to get trained so that they can also be trainers to train other members of the departments. Keep in mind that the police and fire do have some level of training. This opportunity would give the police and fire the ability to train other people within the department without having to bring somebody in. It'd be the same thing for us in the school district. And I think it's a great feature for us to offer that. Very similar to what our nurses do now, they do CPR training, they do defibrillator training. They would then also be able to do this training on top of that to staff that, that could use it. So with that said, I don't know if there's any other comments that need to be made or questions that can be answered tonight.
Committee members. Ms. Haywood.
Oh, no. You can go ahead.
Okay. Ms. Badger.
My question was, so if it's a, it's a train the trainer. Now, is there special, like, materials that we need to make sure that when they come back to the district and they can train the, they train their colleagues on how to do it? Because I think you said, like, simulator, is there simulator involved?
Right. So I'm, I'm sort of lucky where I have, you know, the hospital has invested a certain amount of money in this, but there's actually very cheap, accessible kits put out by the Emergency Nurses Association. They're about $300 each. They come with a fake or prosthetic leg with a wound in it and the ability to put a tourniquet on it.
Okay. Yeah.
Did you have any?
Well, I was just gonna, I was, I was, the first time I heard about it was, I was with Ms. Haywood at the school committee conference. And we were in a workshop about crisis and school safety and this topic. I think you might have even introduced it or was, you joined in the conversation quite a bit. And I, I think when it was used in that context, it was like, oh my gosh, we have to do this. Because I think when you first get in the presentation, you think it might be just one or two people. But if there's some kind of crisis in the schools, then this is a necessity.
Absolutely.
So, and it just kind of puts a knot in your throat when you think about it in that kind of respect. But I think that might be, I know that was the reason that we were in that workshop. It was more on school safety.
But also, I mean, it could also be used on every day.
Day-to-day.
Every day.
Yeah.
Honestly. As, so working in trauma, a lot of times it doesn't necessitate a crisis.
No, it's just when you think about it that way, it's like, phew. We need, I mean, we definitely need to, I mean, it's just another tool in our toolbox.
Absolutely.
Preparedness tool, in a sense.
Day-to-day, yeah. Absolutely.
It's more so a preparedness tool. It's just an adjunct to our, like, BLS and heart savers and.
I think it's great.
Is this, when our trainers are trained, can they train students? I had asked our student representatives to stay for this presentation this evening. So can students be trained?
Yes, absolutely.
Biomed would be trained, right, their students?
So initially, the program is to train the students.
To train students.
To train students. So what will be done, so with Megan and Reza, they're going to train our nurses. Our nurses are already trained to use tourniquets. They'll be trained as trainers. So when it's rolled out with, with students, we will have that much in terms of staff to assist with the rollout. And then in the years going forward, have the ability to actually continue this program, possibly through the biomed.
Let me put our student reps on the floor for a second. Is it, is it a tool in your toolbox that you think would be helpful to learn how to compress and how to use a tourniquet?
I mean, I'm, I would like to avoid, but if I'm in a situation where I have to use it, yes, it would be helpful. Like, I'm, over the summer, I work as a camp counselor and for that, I'm CPR certified. So I'm like, I hope I never have to use CPR, but like, thank God I have that. So if I have to be able to use that, I have that skill.
Same.
Yeah.
Ms. Hunt?
Would the, so you said biomed, but would allied health be trained in it as well? Or, because they are, they get trained for CPR during their, when they're juniors.
So because it's a, it's initially going to be a pilot, so.
And Allison could probably speak to that as well.
As to how we chose this group of students.
To start with.
Yes, to start with.
Hi, how are you? Good evening. One of the reasons for electing to choose that biomed group originally was to have the interest, much like the allied health, but where the allied health is more of the patient care aspect and we were more of the science aspect behind it. It fit really well in that 10th grade module with human body systems and to take advantage also of the healthcare professionals where the career is, the careers play such an important role in that curriculum. So it was really a natural fit to begin with. I don't see why there's any issue behind that. I think with our nurse leaders being trained also, as it was mentioned, we're building that capacity within the district to be able to provide that training to other students. And so I think what's, what's nice, again, and Dr. Maestis touched upon that, is that we get the ability to add in these awesome people who will give our students an experience that they can't have every day, where it's such a huge component of our program.
Right.
Just out of curiosity, I wasn't too sure if I missed it. Is it a service provided by the hospital and what are the costs that the district is looking at? Is it just, we would look at spending money on the pieces that we need to train?
Dr. Campbell?
Campbell? Yep. Well, the hospital's been generous enough to provide this at no cost to us. In terms of the supplies and materials, we have those materials. We don't have the super amazing simulation version, but we do have, through the nurses' training that they've already gone through, I know that Ms. Rains has purchased those materials. So we have plenty of tourniquets, we have the, the.
We have models without sensors.
Yes.
She's got fun sensors. We have models without sensors.
And I just, I, I was wondering if this is branched out to the YMC. I work at the YMC, I've been Hanover, and we just did our, I do my CPR, you know, recertification every two years. And it's unbelievable how much has changed in the past two years just with resuscitation and some of the standards that they've changed, that now it's just, you know, maintaining life so that the first responders can get there and do what they're supposed to do. They've somewhat simplified it, but it has, like, the dynamics of it have changed so much. And these things happen all the time. Like Eddie had said, you know, he's working in camps, you know, these, these things come up. And sometimes it's not always, you know, cardiac arrest that we're dealing with, it's life-altering injuries that, you know, if we have proactive measures to help with that and things, accidents happen. So it's, it's interesting.
Other questions or comments? Sounds like a really important program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now to our student representatives. We'll start with North.
Thank you. Holiday recess begins with a half-day on Friday, December 21st, and students will turn to school on Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019. The Plymouth North High School's music department held its annual winter concert in the Performing Arts Center on December 12th and December 13th. The free concerts include performances from Concert Band Orchestra on Wednesday evening and the chorus, mixed choir, and treble choir on Thursday evening. Students performed for an audience of over 600 guests. Band and choral directors Bonnie Holmes and Dave Grossman worked hard to make both evenings a great success. Skills USA students worked together to promote the mitten tree. To decorate the tree, students and staff were, staff were asked to bring in hats, scarves, mittens, gloves, and socks. All items will be donated to the Plymouth Area Coalition for the homeless. Please come to see the mitten tree in front of, in front of our school store. Parents are encouraged to view their students' Aspen account to monitor their progress. A letter went home to those students in danger of failing any subject on Friday, December 14th. Many groups within our school community are working on, together to raise money for the giving tree. The combined money raised for the giving tree will go towards gift cards and are given directly to families in the PNHS community. The efforts for this, of the students in these clubs are very much appreciated. The mid-year exams will begin on Monday, January 14th and will continue through Friday, January 18th. The 18th will be a half-day of school. Winter sports are now in full swing. Check out the, check out the many sporting events and join us to cheer on the Eagles. The Guidance College Experience will be held on January 3rd from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. The college experience will focus, will focus on a panel of Plymouth North graduates who are currently enrolled in various colleges. The students will, will reflect, will reflect on their journey throughout the college application process, enrolling in college, and their triumphs regarding their postgraduate transitions. The forum is open to all current Plymouth North students and parents. We'd like to wish all families a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Abigail.
380 winter athletes began their season this December. We are fortunate to have so many students involved in athletics as a part of our school culture in addition to other extracurricular activities. Many school records have been crushed this week. Carter Nevelus broke the high jump record and Nick Sealy broke the shot put record at the track meet last week. The track team will be facing both North Quincy and Quincy this Friday at the Reggie Lewis Center. The wrestling team also won first place in the invitational meet last weekend. Tomorrow, the junior class will be dropping off toys for the Plymouth Area Coalition homeless shelter. The student council is also introducing a single graduation cap and gown system where boys and girls will have the same cap and gown. And on Wednesday at 5:30 at the Armstrong Arena, there'll be the unveiling of the banner for the hockey team's state championship. The boys' basketball team had their opening game last Friday. They had a tough loss, but were looking forward to the rest of the season. PSHS also hosted a Polar Express movie night last Friday to kick off the Christmas season. There is a winter instrumental concert, September 19th, at 7:00 PM. A holiday fundraiser took place by the staff that raised over $1,000 for families in need. The NHS induction will take place on January 24th. And our Grade 8 Parent Night and Tech Expo is on January 28th. Thanks to the PYDC for having a winter athlete seminar on vaping and the health effects that follow, along with the MIAA consequences. Congratulations to our students who were inducted to the TRIM Music Honor Society last week. This group is held to high standards, similar to that of the National Honor Society, and we're extremely fortunate to provide the students with, who excel in music at PSHS. Our marketing department also raised over $1,200 with Lights of Hope fundraiser for Beth Israel Hospital. This is one of the most wonderful events of the year, and it was held at the Griss Mill the night of the tree lighting. Come see the Plymouth North versus Plymouth South varsity girls' basketball at the TD Garden on Sunday, January 6th at 9:30 AM. Tickets can be purchased at the high school from the varsity coaches for $16 in advance. This is one of a series of games that will be played that, that day as a part of the Good Sports fundraiser to purchase equipment for children who need, who need, and who are in need and cannot afford the equipment themselves.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify, did you say that you're going to go to caps and gowns, one color?
That's what they, yeah, that's what they're talking about.
Okay, all right. And the other, and what was the date of the National Honor Society induction, the 20?
24th.
24th of January?
Did they do that last year?
No, they didn't.
No, North had a choice, right?
North had a choice.
They could, they could wear whatever they wanted.
Right. Okay, thank you for those reports. Helpful as usual. Old business. Committee members need to raise any things this evening on the old business list? I'm not seeing any hands. It's their new business that committee wants to bring up this evening. Ms. Hunt?
So I was, we haven't had a chance to do a report out on our conference, the MASC conference yet. But given, I think, given everything that's going on with the, you know, social emotional learning and just the way things have been lately, it's really been pretty much a lot of real estate in my head lately. And I know I went to, I don't know if Ms. Haywood went with me, but I went to a mindfulness workshop. There are several districts that do that. And I know we've done it and we do parts of it. And I reached out to, to Dr. Maestis about it. And I don't know if it's something that we can, I just think, just with everything that's been going on lately, it's been a rough month. And I'm wondering what we can do more in, in that area to help the students. I reached out to a friend of mine who, and I know, I've actually even talked to some teachers this weekend. teachers this weekend, and some of them say that they do it, some of them say that they don't. They mentioned the Calm Classroom, but that really sounds like it's more, is that what it's called, Calm Classroom, Calm? But that sounds like it's more what you do with other students, not what you do with yourself. So I reached out to a friend of mine who's going to try and pull some resources together for me to maybe present or, or introduce him to Gary and talked about it. He does a lot of the mindfulness meditation, qigong, which is like a Tai Chi mindfulness program, and even if there's some kind of a train, the trainer, but more not random teachers. And, and some of the teachers I talked to, and I know you guys will agree with me, you have enough to do, and it's like, one more thing, great, now we have to do this. But if it's something that we can make simple and, I don't know, I don't even know what to say, but I think it need, and I know it's on your radar, and I think it's definitely on ours, and I think it just needs to be something that we officially put in our, our plan of action to, to work on, because like I said, it's just been overwhelmingly occupying my thoughts, especially this month, so. And I don't know if I'm being too cryptic or not, but I'm, it's purposeful, but I don't know if we can, you know, like I said to, to Dr. Mayestis, I'm happy to introduce you to the person that I spoke to, and he's actually very interested in trying to pull some resources together and see if there's anything that he can do, even if it's an introductory, you know, just free thing to, to start, to get the ball rolling and, till we can figure out what to do about it. So I don't know if anybody else has been thinking about talking about that as well.
Working on health and wellness, I feel like just seeing, even seeing some of the kids, having kids in the school system, some of the pressures that they have to disconnect, you know, mindfulness, like Kim said, meditation, it's a great resource. It's holistic medicine, and I'm a big proactive fan of that. And I don't know if it's just food for thought now and how we can implement it, but I'm a big supporter of it.
It just seems like it's been a rough month.
It's more tools we can give our students.
I agree, without medicating, too.
It's just heartbreaking, so.
Anything else on the new business? Reports and proposals, Dr. Mayestis?
Yes, I'm going to report on 7.1 and 7.2 together.
Okay.
So just to give you an idea, our kids are really excited because Friday's the day before a little break, and we're doing really well with weather, so I know they're really excited that we haven't had any snow days, so I'm really happy about that. We had the opportunity last week to meet with Chris Lloyd and Michelle Ryan from the Department of Education. We're working on a collaborative historical document that will highlight the history of Massachusetts, pre-1620 to current day. And we met with the Department of Education to gauge their interest in endorsing the document and actually partnering to develop this document. We'll be working with the plantation, the Plymouth Public Schools, some historical, historical agencies in Massachusetts to be able to do this collaborative work, which is really assembled for the commemoration of the 400th, but will also serve as a teaching tool that can be used in classrooms across Massachusetts, across the country, and internationally. So we're really excited about that. We'll keep you up to date as, as how things progress with that document, but it should be a, a very good project. The author, proposed author for this book has done, they've completed the Chronicles of Illinois, Chronicles of Texas, and they've done a number of very fascinating educational books that I think you would all just love reading around history. So I think this is a great tie-in, and we're excited to be on the ground level of development of this, and our goal is to get this into every school in Massachusetts and every school in Plymouth, definitely. So I think it would really help to provide resources to teachers that would be aligned with the curriculum frameworks that are revised, and we'll have a teacher's document that they can actually use to align with the current framework, that this document and, and what the frameworks have, have for resources. So I think that's a great opportunity for the school district and Plymouth. The next thing I want to report on is, last week, we completed our second year of pre-venture training for students, PCIS. We'll be working with students at South Middle School after the holidays, and our numbers have increased significantly since our first go-round. And I'll tell you, I, I had the opportunity to work with some students here at PCIS, and it's probably the nicest, the best day that I've had in, since last year's pre-venture group. It was, I just love it. I just love middle school kids, and to be able to work with them is, it's just, it's an opportunity to get re-energized with what we do in education, but be very proud of our kids and what they are willing to engage in and share, and I was very happy to work with them, so that worked out well. And an update on Japan, we have, as of this evening, we have 24 applications for students that would like to travel to Japan. We're going to leave it open for a couple more days, we're going to close it. I've had, I've answered, I've made six phone calls to parents that have questions about it. I've also had questions from students. They've emailed me, very appropriate questions.
Good, yes.
I like that. So, you know, they, pretty good, you know? I'm glad that they communicate with me, and that's great. And the last thing I want to report on, which is really 7.2, is I wanted to re-engage the conversation that we had last year about Aubrey Street. Aubrey Street is slated for renovation. It'll begin in, in April, and it will be a two-year project. So what I'm hoping to do is bring before the school committee on my weekly report any information that I can bring to the school department and the schools regarding traffic conditions and rerouting of, of traffic that may have to take place based on a condition on that street. So as you all know, you heard last year, that whole corridor is going to get reconstructed, and it is part of a significant grant. The road will be widened first. If you have gone down Aubrey Street, you'll notice some trees have been taken down in preparation, but the road will be widened, the sidewalks will be put in, rotaries will come later, but there'll be two rotaries on that street, and it will be a new driving course for the local travel driver's ed people to learn how to engage in a, in a roundabout. So with that said, Dr. Sorenson, I will bring information as detailed as I can when it's available. As, all I have right now is it's starting in April. As to the aggressiveness of the construction, I don't know yet, but as soon as I find out, I will bring it to the committee.
Committee members with questions to Dr. Mayestis following his reports. We look forward to hearing about the, I, I was going to call them traffic service. What do they call them? Roundabouts?
I'll call it a rotary.
They got one at Duxbury, go practice out.
Okay, retirements.
Yes, we have three retirements to report this evening. Sue Driever, who's a district-wide educational secretary for 26 years of service. Doreen Hancock, a teacher at Federal Furnace, is retiring after 20 years of service. And Denise Marr, one of our food services cooks, is retiring after 24 years of service.
Ms. Hunt?
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, we thank these individuals for their service and wish them a happy retirement.
Thank you, thank you for that report. Correspondents, Mr. Morgan?
No correspondents this evening.
We have a request for some field trips. Dr. Mayestis?
Yes, tonight, I'm going to report on the first field trip that is being requested. This is a Plymouth North High, Plymouth North High School, Plymouth South High School international field trip to Beijing, China. This field trip is the second. We had one last year. We had a very successful trip last year. These students will be going to the school of students that are actually coming in, in Plymouth. So there's a, we're building a internal capacity to have an exchange with China with the same school that are, the kids that are actually going to be coming to school in Plymouth. From what I understand is the, there is a, a super high competition in China to actually host our students. That they are so excited that they, they, yeah, it is, the list of families that actually want to host our kids is through the roof. So we're very excited that this opportunity can be brought to our students. As you all know, that the detail in this trip is, you know, the majority of cost associated with it is air, is airfare. The students will be staying with host families in minimal cost on that end, but this is the second year that we actually offer this trip. Chaperones will be, one chaperone for eight students, and that opportunity is going to take place during April vacation, so they won't miss school. They may, they may leave a day early, but again, that has to be determined on the best opportunity for ticket prices to, to China. So tickets to China are a little bit, are a little bit steep, so. But the response from students from last year was overwhelmingly positive, and we've, we are beginning to form a great partnership with this school. I had the opportunity to meet with the principal here in Plymouth. They came over about a month and a half ago, and I spent the day with the principal and one of the directors, and they're just so excited to, to be partnering with our district. So, you know, it's a, they're very, very large high schools, so I believe this high school has about 6,000 students, so very, very, very different educational environment. So, yeah, so.
We'll take them, committee will take them one at a time. This is an action item. Committee members with questions, comments, or motions? Badger?
First, I just wanted to say I'm so jealous. And then second, I'd like to move that we approve this field trip for April vacation in 2019 in China. Yeah, I'll be a chaperone if you need one. I'll just pay to go. I don't care.
That can be arranged. So we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Morgan is the second. Are there any questions on this one? Okay, we'll take the vote. Double marketers. And everybody hasn't voted in favor. And now the next one, Dr. Mayestis?
Yes, the next one is Plymouth North High School International Field Trip, and this is to Belize, and we have two staff members here tonight that are prepared to present. We have Mr. Cardozo and Mrs. Jalbert, they're here tonight to present information. They were here last year, and they are veterans at coming to the table of school committee. So welcome, and they brought somebody else, so.
I want to switch places with them.
Good evening, school board committee.
Thank you for having us again. So as you very, very aware, we, we love offering those opportunities to our students, and this time we chose a destination that hasn't been offered before for some of its main resources and places that our students will be able to see when they're visiting. So we chose Belize, and we chose to take them in April to 2020, so that's so far ahead, so that the payments would be very low for our students, so even the ones that are not probably seeing any of those travel opportunities, they could possibly make them happen. And some of the things that our students will be able to see while they're visiting, they're going to visit some of the Mayan ruins, they'll be able to visit the second greatest bear reef that's just after the, the one in Australia. They're going to be able to visit the tropical forest, where they will be conducting a guided jungle hike. They'll be visiting a local school, where there'll be exchange of culture, dances, and gifts as well, and they will also be able to just get immersed on that culture and be able to learn a little more about our countries. They're so near us, but at the same time have so many different things to offer to them. We have been trying to offer so many different fundraisers for our students, and our most recent fundraiser, or all the different events that we put together for our Iceland field trip, for example, we offered a total of 11 different fundraisers for our students, raising a total of $4,000 for our students. And our students just seem so excited to be able to be offered so many unique opportunities, and to help speak for them, we invited one of our students who has joined us in our Galapagos trip, and she's coming to Iceland with us as well in February to just share a little what she has learned and experienced.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Fien. I'm a senior at Plymouth North High School, and this past April, I was given the chance to travel to the Galapagos, which was amazing. This is the first time that I traveled outside of the US, so I was a little nervous expense-wise and the fact that I was leaving the country. It was, it was incredible, though. The whole trip was so organized. The EF tour is, just does an incredible job. Our tour guide Alejandro was incredible. He knew so much about the islands and Quito, Ecuador, which is where we first stopped, and then we had to travel from there to the islands themselves, and each island was different in its own way, and we just learned so much. We hiked to the top of a volcano, and it was just so amazing to see the, how big the boll that actually was, and it was just incredible. We got to go snorkeling and see all the different, the sea life there that's quite different from over here, and we also got to see the famous turtles, as you all probably know about, and they were just incredible. We got to see how they're trying to keep them safe, and it was just, it's incredible to see their culture and how they perform day-to-day lives. And it was really amazing also to see Quito, Ecuador, which was, we stopped there before and on the way back from the islands, and it was incredible to see the way that they just lived their lives. We got to go to the markets that they have over there, and I also take Spanish classes at Plymouth North. This is my last year taking Spanish, which is kind of sad because I love it, and it really gave me a chance to use that, because I don't usually get to use those skills every day. But over there, sometimes they don't always, not everybody knows how to speak English, so it was really, it was incredible to be able to like speak to them and be able to connect with people that way. And, yeah, it was, it was definitely a trip of a lifetime, and I am so excited that I get to experience another trip, which is to Iceland, and I'm looking forward to that experience as well.
And since we started our first program, when we went to Costa Rica, we had 22 students traveling with us. For the Galapagos, we had a total of 30, and for now Iceland, we have a total of 35. So it seems that students are developing the travel bug that I seem to have caught from the beginning when I first moved to the US myself, and I think that once their eyes open to the horizon of what the world is out there, it's, nothing can stop them. So by opening these doors and opportunities for them, we are expanding their education environment. So it's not, everything that they learn about the Mayan ruins, or what they learn about the marine fauna and the different coral reefs and how the corals are actually bleaching, and that will give them a chance to experience those things for themselves and be able to get passionate about it and do something about it themselves. And maybe they'll discover careers they never thought were possible, or things that they never had interest in. So we would like to have your approval on being able to take our students on this other extraordinary opportunity.
Okay, let's see what the committee members, Ms. Burgess? Ms. Burgess has already moved. Before we had a chance to discuss it. Is there a second? Ms. Badger, is the second?
I would also like to go.
I'm the bug in high school on a trip.
I did too, I did too.
Well, I guess there is no discussion. We'll take the vote. Oh, Ms. Hunt?
I, I particularly like, and I don't remember seeing this before, and if I did, I missed it, the fact that you did plan it so far, that it was $157 a month?
That is correct.
That's so manageable.
Yes.
And, and it gives, I mean, the students can even raise that money, you know, part-time job a month, and I don't know if I've ever seen it broken down quite like that before, but I love that, and I would love to see that more often, have enough time. I know my daughters wanted to go on a couple, and it's been that quick last-minute decision where we had to come up with a, a lot of money all at once, and we, it wasn't doable for us, so this is definitely the way to go with the.
We've definitely had some students take advantage of the fundraising. I could easily say that we have some students that have raised a good $600 or $700 just by the opportunities that we've provided them. So that's, you know, could easily for that payment be.
Absolutely, that's.
Six or seven payments that they'd be making, so.
Right, right, so I, I like that model.
And, and it gives students who would not have a chance for anything like this in their whole life to raise the money to be able to do this, and it, it just, it's really astounding, so. Okay, so let's vote then. Oh, we all voted to go with you. I didn't notice that.
What?
Everybody voted to go with you today. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You don't mind an extra seven adults with you, do you?
And now we have the baseball team request. And now we have the baseball team request, Dr. Miestis.
Yes, tonight we have a request from the Plymouth South High School baseball team. And Mr. Fuss is here tonight to help support this also. Mr. Han is in support this evening. This is an opportunity for Plymouth South High School baseball during spring break to be able to do some team building. So Mr. Fuss is here, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I know you guys all have busy schedules. And I appreciate you taking the time to hear our, our team requests to go to Syracuse, New York. It's a unique opportunity for us to, you know, take our varsity baseball team, provide them with an experience that both athletic and educational that they, you know, may not normally be able to experience. So over April break, from April 18th to the 20th, we will, we're hoping to travel to Syracuse, New York, play against two Syracuse-area teams. But in the process of making the trip to Syracuse, we would also soak up some educational opportunities by going into Cooperstown to, you know, give the kids exposure to, you know, America's greatest pastime at the Baseball Hall of Fame. But also, yeah, as, you know, many of our players at the, at the high school level are prospective college students, we would also be, when we arrive in Syracuse, to visit Lemoine College, which is a small private school, private college. I would say similar to Boston College, a small Jesuit school that is located right in Syracuse. That offers, you know, a multitude of majors and academic fields that, you know, our students may be interested in pursuing. And the reason why we, one of the reasons why we chose Lemoine over, you know, say visiting Syracuse is that Lemoine is a baseball school while Syracuse is not. So we'd also be touring the baseball fields, facilities while we were there. And then on that Friday, we play a doubleheader against Bishop Grimes High School, which is a local, local Catholic school in Syracuse. And then, but then that we, on that Friday, we take that tour to Lemoine College. And then Saturday, play a third scrimmage and then return home to make the trip. But, and again, it's a, you know, an opportunity for, obviously for team building, to provide our kids with a unique experience that they may, that they would carry with them as they matriculate through Plymouth South High School. And thank you very much.
Okay, great, great presentation. Let's have a discussion and we'll take questions. Committee members. I have, well, one, I got to tell you, I really truly appreciated reading. Any student who is in financial need will be covered by this account. And I'm really pleased to see that because there will be students who cannot afford to go. So I'm really glad to hear that.
Right, we, we're prepared, we're prepared right now. We already have a team fundraiser that we usually do every season. We do, we have a bowling fundraiser, brings families, the players and their families together to raise money for the baseball program. But in addition to that, we're in the process, contingent on school committees approval that to start a baseball clinic open to, you know, local kids in the area in February, which would help offset some of those costs. But even still, you know, we're, the baseball programs prepared to help any kid. We would never deny a kid the ability to be able to go on this trip and have this experience.
How many varsity players do you carry?
It ranges from year to year. Based on what we have, we're projecting to carry about 20 players.
About 20 players?
Yeah, about 20 players.
And it would be difficult to open this up to JV as well?
It would, I mean, it, we could do, with the, with the bus that we're taking, we could open it up to JV players. But it's just with finding field space to accommodate JV. And Bishop Grimes may not have a JV. I mean, they, they, sometimes they can't accommodate both because it is, it is a smaller school.
Have you looked into it?
I haven't looked into it, but I could certainly do that.
And the reason why I'm thinking is if I'm a JV player and I find out that the varsity went this year and I'm making varsity next year, I'm going to say, oh, man, we're going to go on the trip next year.
Yeah.
But we may not.
Yeah, that's something I could definitely look into. And at that point, which we could extend that, we could extend that option if we were able to accommodate all of them.
I think it would be great if you could.
Okay.
That's what I think.
If they just participated in the clinics.
I'm sorry?
Even if they didn't participate in a game, but participated in the other activities and cheered on their team, I mean. Yeah.
How many JV players do you carry?
Like I said, it, it does range from year to year. Yeah, but typically they do tend to be small because sometimes we have players that taxi between both the JV and the varsity. So it may.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so it may be somewhere around, it could be as low as 15. It could be as many as 20. It depends from year to year.
Well, it's worth looking at, I think.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Ms. Hunt.
I'll move to approve this request.
We have a motion, seconded by Ms. Badger. Are there any questions? Okay, we will vote on the motion. Okay, everybody voted in favor, great.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a couple of job descriptions. Ms. Frye.
Yes, we have two job descriptions tonight. As you've probably noticed, we moved from our paraeducators to our teaching staff, to our counseling staff. And we're now moving into our clerical staff. And then we'll probably be closing out the EAPC work and moving into other bargaining groups. The first is the main office secretary in our elementary schools. We did have to change this quite a bit because it was very outdated. It was in 1991. It is a 200-day position. There is, I did not remove at the bottom, it should say a 200-day under terms of employment as well as at the top, it says 220. It's a 200-day work year. And we really changed it with the schools today, ensuring that, you know, the organization, but the technical aspect, because they're doing so much through Aspen and things like that. We prioritized people skills and, you know, having a welcoming environment. But really, they're the, they're critical. They're the key, they're the strongest people, I always say, in the building. But really, you know, working with their supervisors, routing parents, answering any questions and things like that. So that is the elementary main office secretary.
Ms. Badger.
I just have a question. So on tour, it says qualifications. And the second line says a willingness to learn Word and data processing and other related clerical skills. I feel like, I mean, maybe it's just me, but Word and Data would, like typing, like you don't, you don't type on a, we don't have typewriters.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's something that's necessary. I mean, you should, I mean, in this day and age, I don't know too many people who don't know how to use Word.
I know. Believe it or not, we've had candidates who don't have technology skills for certain positions in the district.
They can type?
That was, and we involve them.
What do they type on?
I know, one of our, one of our secretaries was a point person for this. And she's been involved, and she was very passionate about that. The data processing is actually intentional because data processing, we look at as Aspen and our report cards and transcripts and all that. So that's, and that gets pretty intricate with scheduling, so. But believe it or not, they really wanted that in there, so.
Okay, that was just curiosity factor.
Yes, no problem.
Any other questions? So I am assuming then that terms of employment will change to 200 days?
Yes, that one word, yep. It's correct at the top, we didn't change it.
There a motion? Ms. Hunt?
I move that the job description for main office secretary, elementary 200, be accepted and approved as presented.
Seconded by Ms. Burgess. Is there a question from anybody? Nope, we'll vote for it then. Okay, everybody voted. And now the main office secretary.
Yes, this is at the secondary level. And there is a few more responsibilities at this that, that really, they work a longer school year, really because of the activities in the buildings at the secondary throughout the summer and before the school year starts. And also on school vacation weeks, things like work permits come into play, a lot of different factors. So it's a similar position. They also work collaboratively with the principal on student activity accounting and reporting, which works directly with Mr. Costin's office. And that's, being a former principal, it's a very important task of the, the secondary because of prom tickets and all the fun things that go on at that level. And so there's a lot of that type of piece. And the building use is a big piece for this position at some of the secondary schools as well because those are rented out a lot more. But they're just fantastic people. And this is, we've updated into the century, I keep saying, pretty much, literally.
Committee members. Ms. Badger.
I move that we approve the main office secretary, 220 days for.
We have the motion, seconded by Mr. Selly. On a question? Okay. Please vote. That's unanimous, thank you. Fundraising activities, are there anything to report under fundraising activities this evening? Mr. Campbell?
Just to remind you that, well, there's a number of updates to the fundraising form in the yellow are completed fundraisers that are new to this presentation. And then the blue, those highlighted in blue are new fundraisers that have begun or will be beginning.
Okay, any questions? Right. Reports and proposals from committee members. Floor is open, Ms. Hunt.
I just have one thing, and it's to kind of piggyback on what Dr. Miestis was saying about the Shichikahama trip. I, the DVC met, and I know, I'm happy to hear that 24 students. And they're, they're starting to think about who might be going on the town side. And I think Dr. Swanson, and you need to start thinking about that on our side because they're asking for numbers and they want names of who's going as officials as soon as possible. The other thing is, and I think I did, I forwarded you.
Yes.
I got a message from Tyler. And it's kind of good, I know we've been talking for years and years and years about doing some kind of a, you know, an exchange virtually. And it hasn't been able to work in the past because of their curriculum. Well, now it's actually being talked about pretty extensively about doing some kind of a virtual exchange with us. And one of the things that I forwarded to Dr. Miestis is they want to start thinking about how that's going to look, if it's going to be like a Facebook Live thing or if it's going to be a Skype, who they want to do it. They suggested maybe starting out with the two teachers that went last year. Or that were, they came here last year. But like Nancy and Becky. And I, I mean, out of the, what they were proposing, doing that versus just a random group of students, I think that that sounds like a good, a good start, a teacher that actually went over there. So they are starting to make those. So they're looking for some recommendations from our ed TV or our tech team, as well as Dr. Miestis, on how to actually start getting that going.
Of course, the biggest issue with that is the time difference, not the curriculum.
Right, right. Well, it was, but it was also, it wasn't just the time difference because they won't, they, their schedule is so tight that they would not allow. One of the things that we talked about in the meeting was they couldn't interject anything that wasn't already part of their curriculum. So it's, they're talking about it. He said they're, they're. Yep, they're going to start doing it through the Crooksmora. They're going to start, they want to start seeing it happen in January. Like they want to get started now. They said Shichikahama students will be participating in the online exchange, will be those who went to Plymouth this year. And they want to know who we think would be best to put them in touch with on our side. And they're looking into, or Tyler is looking into different ways we might be able to actually conduct the exchange, one of which being Facebook. We are still sifting through various options to find the best one, but they would love to hear our ideas. So it's, it's definitely moving forward in, in that direction.
Just have a question. I, I think this may plan to the contingent from Plymouth. Is this the official 30th?
2020 is, I believe, oh, actually, no. I think this is.
This is 30 years, so.
And I know.
Just a question, and I don't know, are they planning any celebration activities that I would anticipate, of course, a selectman and a school committee member would have to be representative of the delegation? So we.
I'll, I'll, we'll send Tyler a message and ask them if they're planning anything. He did want to know, so when, when the DVC was talking, they were saying that what they would, could fund would be one school committee member, one selectman, like always. And then he was thinking Chairman Tavares was saying an additional person. He was throwing around like the town manager or somebody else that's a town official to go over there as well, as well as the two teachers. And that's who would come out of our budget. And then up to like 12 students, 12 to 15, I think we said 14 last time.
Yeah, and I think we have to get that number down because, I mean, we have 24 applications, it's the largest pool. So we've got to figure out.
Yeah.
Because we're probably alternates.
Yeah.
Because some kids, when they go through the orientation, they kind of find out they may not want to go.
And, and I sent Tyler all that information. And I just said an additional person. I didn't specifically say who it was. And they were very interested in who that was. So that decision, I don't think, has been made. That was just some discussion in the distinguished visitors committee. But you're right, if it is an official, we might need to look at exactly who goes.
We, we have to figure out who the interview team is going to be.
Yeah.
So we need to get that selected. And I think the DVC has a member.
Actually, they, they don't. We talked about that a little bit. Last time we, we put, we asked for a member and it didn't work out that they sent somebody. And their answer was, I, you know, I thought we decided the school was going to handle it. So I think that they, you know, if they have a chance to come. But I think that they think we do it well and that we should just continue with the process that we've been doing. So we can pick former, you know, like we did last.
It might be two Saturdays or two.
Yeah.
Because to interview 24 kids meaningfully.
Yeah.
In one day is. And it's got to be the same people.
Right, right.
So something to think about.
We need to think about that.
And we can do it north like we did last time, have some of the kids that have gone in the years past.
That was, that was great. So for anybody that doesn't know, we had some students that had gone in the past kind of sit outside the interview room. And as students came in to wait to interview, they were available for questions. And they kind of let the kids know what it was like from their perspective to go, which was really, really, really helpful. It was good, it worked out very good. And we had Christine Bonfilio, who is both, she has gone over there as a student. She's gone over there as a chaperone and she's hosted. So she might, I'm sure she's always offered.
She's offered in the past, and I think she would probably like the opportunity.
Yep, and one more, just before I, I finish. I did start the process, I think I mentioned last time, what we want to do as a gift for them next year is, is a yearbook. And I actually, I contacted the Plymouth North Yearbook Committee, but I haven't gotten an answer as to the contact information. So we put a general call over social media and through the schools, anybody that has participated in the program in the past. And I know Mrs. Burgess might have some names that she can pass on, as well as whatever we've collected the last few years. But I've had about 20 emails from people. Jamie Rosenberg, who's living in Japan now.
Really?
Contacted me. So I've had about 20 emails of people going back to the early 90s that have given me their contact information. So the first step is we're just going to create a database. And then we'll do some kind of message and maybe have like a little mini reunion where we can have a photographer present and start doing a, a yearbook kind of situation with pictures. A couple of the people have told me they have some pictures they can share. So anybody that has sent it, I have sent them a response. And I've said, you know, hang tight, you'll hear from us again, but we're just collecting information for now. So that's it.
I would just add, and I concur with what you said, going back to the, you know, the real-time Facebook or internet experience, that some of the teachers that went last year were very eager to do, to do that. So they're, they're a good resource to create that online real-time thing.
Yeah.
Okay, we're under reports and proposals, Ms. Badger.
Sorry. I just wanted to say on December 6th, we had one of our Pilgrimage Collaborative meetings. And Dipna has officially taken over the reins and we're really excited to have her. She presented us with her 172-day plan on what she, how she's like taking forward and looking at the year. And if anybody's interested, the entry pen, she's right now just listening and taking everything in. She's going to analyze and share her feedback with us and then really start to develop goals that are realistic for the collaborative and see how it moves forward. You know, we, it's moved forward so, it's so well in the last, like, you know, five or six years. And she's just looking to make it bigger and better and continue to service the populations that are needed and to determine what those are as we move forward. So that's her big piece. And we're also still looking into member versus non-member tuition rates and if there's some sort of kickback if you're a member or, and I shouldn't say kickback, I, some sort of like. Some sort of reimbursement at the end of the year, whether or not it's a rebate or a volume discount or how we kind of, how we figure that out. But I do know that a lot of districts are interested in figuring out why, why be a member and what, what is that to us? So that, that's kind of the big things that we're working on right now.
Okay, thank you. How about reports and proposals? Ms. Burgess.
The building committee?
Yeah, I'm finishing this topic. Anything else under, under reports and proposals? Okay, so before we go into personnel, let's do the building committee report.
Okay. So, South High School. It was.
Okay. So, South High School, it was, as of the night we met, it was 100% build already, so it's done. As Tavares said, it's gone. We lead Silva, and there was $1.2 million about left that we didn't use from the override. So, that was great. On the Russell Street parking deck, the lower deck is gonna be open on January 7th for the town hall employees to get in. So, that's really good. And on the Maritime Facility, they had four bids, three of the four were subcontractors, though not really contractors, and all were over budget. So, they're working on what they're gonna do right now, if they're gonna rebid it, or whatever. The library roof, they're holding off until April and May because of the weather, and they've got a few other things. They've got, instead of 45 leaks, they've now got 55 leaks in the roof, so they're putting buckets under. It's, so, it needs to happen. North Plymouth Fire Station, whoops. The North Plymouth Fire Station's moving along. They're talking about doing a vehicle exhaust recovery system, and they want to add that to their alternatives, I think. They say the alternatives, one is radiant heat in the Apparatus Bay area, epoxy flooring in the Apparatus Bay area, and a fuel depot. But then, they'd like, they really would like to have the exhaust so that it, yeah, it makes the air clean inside always. And, and the approximate cost should be about round $7.5 million. Newtown Hall. There wasn't too much on that. I'm gonna go by it. Okay. On the 1749 House Courthouse, they have Spencer Architect, and they're going to town meeting in spring for $380,000, but that's, that's a project that I think they voted on. I think they need additional funding. But they voted on it the last town meeting, and it's under CPA funding. And the airport administration building is being done, and it should be done by June 30th this year. The salt shed is, all they said is full of salt. They haven't done anything about working on the salt shed. And Fire Station Headquarters, they talked about the roof repairs and a sump pump, and they're also talking about possibly doing another main fire station instead of that one. So, we'll see what's going forward. The, they said that there was repairs of various buildings, 244,102. For all buildings, though, 1.7. So, there's, there's a lot that they're doing on the town side, trying to figure out with Wayne what they, what they can do. That's really it.
All right, thank you for that report. Any questions on the building committee report? Personnel?
Yes, we've been very busy in personnel. Two certified appointments, one coach appointment, seven classified appointments, we have four leaves of absence, and 10 resignations.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any questions? Okay. Warrant this evening, Ms. Hunt?
Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrant for review, I remove, I remove, I'm tired. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the Reports and Accounts Payable Warrant Number S122018 in the amount of $1,728,571 and 13 cents as presented.
That's the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Morgan is the second on that motion. Is there a question on the warrant motion? Okay, then, we shall take the vote on that. Everybody voted in favor. Thank you. The next item is minutes, and we will start with November the 5th. Committee members, November the 5th. Ms. Hunt?
I move that the minutes of the November 5th school committee meeting be accepted and approved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Badger is the second. Question. I'd like to bring your attention to page four of 20, and if you go down about 21 lines, you see Dr. Miestis is talking, and I'm gonna read what it says. It starts with, "He further highlighted the drama program at North for the production of Clue that was outstanding by all accounts." Then it goes on to say, "Part of his goals received from former staff member that does Sunday School programs, activity was to identify this is me moment." Something happened.
There's a sentence missing.
Clearly, something happened. In the word processing of that paragraph.
I can tell you what I said.
Well, and further then, a comment that Ms. Haywood made at another point in the agenda got thrown into this paragraph. If you read further on, "Ms. Haywood stopped by Lincoln Street and commented on the wonderful, amazing work." Something happened here with the word smithing of that paragraph.
We can repost.
I'm sorry?
We can repost it once it's corrected.
Yeah.
I'll fix it and repost it. Yes.
Okay, so then we'll...
Good catch. I saw the Sunday School thing, and I was like, what?
So, we had a motion. Can we withdraw the motion?
Yes.
From the floor?
Withdrawn.
In a second. So, it's been withdrawn, and we'll bring these minutes up again at another time. And now, we can move to November the 19th. Is there a motion? Don't be afraid now.
I know. I move that the minutes of the November 19th school committee meeting be accepted and approved as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Badger is the second. Are there any questions?
Yeah. There's only one thing, my name is always used as Marjorie, and I'm Margie. M-A-R-G-I-E, so, no Marjorie.
Right. Well, yeah, Ms. Marjorie C. Burgess, huh?
Yeah, I've never been Marjorie.
With that correction, any other? Okay, we'll take the vote on these minutes, then.
So formal tonight, Margie.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody, we have one abstention. Everybody else voted in favor. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the school committee this evening? Seeing no hands from committee members, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a very Merry Christmas, everybody, because we're not gonna see each other till afterwards.
Have a great, a great holiday, yes.